Okay, we're live.
Live, I'm Trustee.
Good evening, everyone. Like to welcome all to the nine December business meeting, the Groseal Township Board of Trustees. We'll call the meeting to order at, make it seven forty-four. And let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
And the states of America and to the Republic where riches stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have the entire board present, so we will conduct business as planned. First, I'd like to introduce Boy Scout Troop twelve sixty-one in Groseal. And I understand you're going to fact-check everything we say tonight, so board, they have eyes on us. So, welcome to, you know, your townships' business meeting. This is where we try to get things done, keep your government running smoothly. With that, we'll entertain additions or, yeah, additions or deletions to tonight's agenda?
I'd like to, please, by the way, move back to my position, please, to get, uh, public service support.
Okay, moved by Trustee Melvesto, seconded by Trustee Budney. And I understand that was not ready, we're not quite ready to move on that one. Any comments from the board? Those in favor of deleting action item number three to a later date, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none offered. Other additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? Okay, with none offered, those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The agenda stands as amended. With that, we have no presentations scheduled for tonight. We'll open the microphone to brief public comment on tonight's agenda items. Do we have any comment on tonight's agenda items? Okay, let's see back there. Okay, apparently, I see none. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Treasurer?
Thank you, Brian. I'd like to move to, for consent agenda nineteen dash zero six four. And that includes the minutes of the November fourth, two thousand nineteen, regular meeting. Check register dated through December sixth, two thousand and nineteen. Approve to pay bills through January third, two thousand and twenty. And an addition to the bicycle and pedestrian commission.
Support.
Okay, moved by the Treasurer, seconded by Trustee Budney. Any comments, questions for, from the board?
There was a typo on the, he read it right, but it says two thousand and nineteen, pay bills through two thousand and nineteen, January third. It should be two thousand and twenty.
Should be two thousand and twenty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For clarification.
Oh, they corrected it.
Yep, it's been corrected.
Thank you.
What happens if we print too early?
Okay, you guys didn't catch that one. That's all right. We fixed it. Any other, any other comments on tonight's consent agenda? Okay, with, with none offered, those in favor of approving tonight's consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. None offered. With that, I'd like to welcome Ms. Christine Ridlicky to the, to BPAC. So, thanks for volunteering your time, Christine. Look forward to seeing you and keeping our bike pass moving. Let's move on to tonight's action items. Mr. Treasurer?
Yes, I'd like to move to approve the corrective action plan for the defined benefit pension retirement system.
Support.
Okay, moved by Treasurer, seconded by Trustee Budney. And I think we're going to turn it over to our Finance Director.
Um, I think I'm just going to read the history, and then we'll talk about some of the things that we've already did, and some of the things, you want to go up to, okay?
Yeah, you're a little easier to hear.
I didn't prepare anything. So, what this is, is we have to file a corrective action plan with this Michigan Department of Treasury. So, the Michigan Department of Treasury is requiring that this corrective active plan be filed with, from the local unit of government, with at least one defined benefit pension retirement system that has triggered a preliminary view of unfunded status. So, we only have one pension system, and that is our MERS pension system. All the active employees, full-time employees are within this system. The municipal, the municipal stability board shall review the, what we've, um, are submitting, and they will provide us with, in an approval or a corrective action plan if we need to take further corrections. So, this is just our, giving them the information that they can make their decision on.
And, and just let me say, for the people.
Yep.
Could you tell them why we have to do this?
Yes.
The triggers.
The triggers. So, the triggers are if your funded system is less than sixty percent. So, there's a different calculations that they conclude this on. It's not a simple, simple situation. Our actuarial, so every year we get an actuarial done, and that actuarial was done at December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. Where our audit report is scheduled for March thirty-first, two thousand.
Nineteen.
Nineteen. So, there's a three-month lag in our numbers. And so, what happens, and if you look at our actuary report that's being submitted to the state, our actuary report as of December thirty-first was at sixty-one percent funded. However, there are some GASB requirements in the way they have to report the calculation and report the net assets to the state of Michigan. So, when the audit was done at March thirty-first, there were some, they recalculate based on different criteria, and the audit report came out at fifty-seven point two six percent. So, there is a difference in the percentage, but our actuary does say sixty-one percent. Now, the previous year, our pension was right on target. We were at sixty-one, so we're kind of turtling around the sixty-one to sixty-three. So, last year, I think it was at sixty-three percent. The difference of why we have to do this is because it is one day in time. As we're saying, it's December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. At December thirty-first, the period ended December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, the township recognized eight hundred and twenty-six thousand dollar net loss in revenue by the investment income. So, it's based on the market. So, for that two thousand and eighteen period, we lost eight hundred and twenty-six thousand. To date, for the first three quarters, and everyone's, no one's just like their four fifty-sevens are doing, in the first three quarters of this, of this year, we're already at one point six million dollars ahead. So, you can tell that was one date in time. So, there was almost a two million dollar swing in investment income. So, our, our investment, our net pension investment, that's assets that are sitting there, is nineteen point nine is when we were reported to, as of, as of September thirty-first or September thirtieth, it's twenty-one million. So, don't think that we don't have any money sitting in the bank. We do. We have twenty-one million dollars available for, to pay our pensions. So, what the action plan basically is stating is that there are some things that we have done in the past. So, we know this number's here. It ain't going away overnight. We've done changes to help it. And the amortization that MERS is requiring to pay, we've made all our payments on time and for the correct amounts, and they have, we're shrinking our amortization period. So, when we first started this and brought awareness ten years ago, we had the amortization, so think of it as your loan, I think as your house mortgage loan. We had an interest, we had a thirty-year amortization period, and after so long now, we're at a twenty-year amortization period. So, think what they're doing. They're raising our payments so we get this unfunded thing paid. So, in twenty years, it should, we should get in balance. And that's what they're saying. They're, they don't expect it to be paid tomorrow. They know this is a long-term thing. It didn't happen overnight. It ain't going away overnight, but they're shrinking it. So, they're making us required to pay more every year to fund that unfunded liability. But we have did some things, other than them shrinking the, the amortization period, we've done some changes. We've changed the system that's available to all new hires. So, we have reduced the benefits that new hires will get. So, that was one thing that we did. They talk about this, you know, let's just continue to fund it. Let's just keep, continue to throw money at it. Just so everyone knows, we did, we did that. For when the money was there, we were putting another a hundred thousand dollars that we were paying to the principal of MERS. And we've did, we did that from two thousand, from nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand and nine. So, during that time period, we contributed an additional one point two million dollars. And you know what that did for unfunded liability? Absolutely nothing. So, we could have had another one point two million dollars in the bank that we could have used for other things, such as capital maintenance or whatever it would be. But we threw it at them, and it did nothing to change our, so when they keep saying, just throw more money at it, we have fund balance, throw more money at it, I don't see that that is the resolution. Because it, it didn't work in the past. I'm always to look at history. Why do we think it's a miracle's going to happen in the future if we just start throwing our fund balance at it? So, we tried that, and that wasn't so. And again, I want to reiterate that our actuarial does say sixty-one percent. So, if they use that, we wouldn't even be filing this report. So, we are so close to that line, so we're going to continue to do as we're doing right now. So, some of the things we say for corrective action, obviously, we always look at ways that will, in the future, when things come to that opportunity to do something, we'll continue to look at it. We do have contracts, union contracts expired in two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three. We could look at some final average compensation calculations or something like that. So, there's always opportunity to look further to reduce future pension liabilities. But we got to wait for timing and contracts. We just can't open up contracts. And so, the last contract we did, we got some consensus on the benefits for new hires. So, we just got to keep looking at it. Every time there's an opportunity to come up, if there's an opportunity to make changes, obviously, we'll look at them. And then, the township will continue to pay the required annual contributions reckon by, recommend, recommended by MERS, and, which contain the shortened amortization period. We have no intention of not paying or doing. So, we'll continue to move in that direction. And again, I just want to say that it is based on one day. And like, we know our, our pensions are pensions, and our mortgages and our 401Ks are based on one day, and it changes every day. So, we're just keeping, all we can do is file this report, and within forty-five days, they'll respond and see if we're in compliance or not. Or continue to do what we're doing.
I want to just emphasize two points, and, and tap on one, the snapshot. These, when, when they published, when the, when the auditor published is, when, when GRS published their findings, that's what they knew at that day and that day only. So, you run the numbers, what we have available, what the interest rates are, what the market's doing, what the bonds are doing, all that is based on that. The very next day, that number could be slightly higher, slightly lower. Obviously, three months later, it changed dramatically. But then, a few months after that, it swung dramatically again. So, we're in this for the long term. And the day-to-day changes, and we do go absolutely nuts trying to update that every day. So, again, we're looking at this at the long term. That's what we're in this for.
Also, I want to mention that these unfunded liabilities, yes, they do exist. Are they hurting us financially in the whole scheme of things? They are not. You know, they don't like them as much as we don't like them, as much as you don't like your house payment. It's a part of life. And so, we just went out for those bonds, and I'm proud to say that we continue with our double A rating. And they know all this stuff. They know what's out there. They've looked at our financial condition. And we got a tremendous interest rate, a two point two six percent, which is just amazing. Even the bond market said, no, that was fabulous. So, we are doing things right. These do exist. We don't like them. But eventually, we are doing what's right to turn them around in the time period that we have, so.
Standard and poor's, double A, investment grade, stable, little risk. Those are the guys who know what they're talking about in terms of money. They're pretty, I mean, it could be double A plus, and we're working towards that, but we're double A, investment grade. Well done. That's a, well.
Yeah, and exactly, I, I want to say, because it wasn't, we just went to the, went to our bond guy, and they were sold. Anne had a lot to do with those bonds being sold and helping and getting them out. And congratulations, Anne, and thank you for a job well done.
Thank you.
Yeah. Madam Clerk?
Madam Clerk, well, I'm going to address my comments to the young scouts in the audience here today, because as our Finance Director Anne, who is also a certified public accountant, was talking to you about amortization and actuarials, and some of these very obscure terms that most of us never think about. If you like math, these are the people who make the big bucks. They're the ones who run economies. They're the ones who basically drive the world forward by telling people where the markets are, where the markets are headed, what, you know, whether or not you'll ever be able to retire. And you're probably too young to think about retirement just yet, though that's a lot on our minds. So, as a homework assignment, you might want to go home tonight and look up amortization and actuarial, and, and talk to your scout leaders who are nodding, to get a little better understanding of some of these financial terms and what the ramifications are to your everyday life.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the board? All right. Anne, thanks. Thank you so much. Let's bring this up now. Okay, uh, let's see. Your recommendation is, those in favor of approving the attached corrective, corrective action plan, the defined, defined benefit pension retirement system, as explained, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none offered. That carries. Thank you. You'll get that filed with the state?
Yep.
Very good. Thank you. Let's move on to action item number two. Mr. Budney?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. And I'm going to just, I'm going to be ahead of myself here, Derek. I'm going to ask you to come up. Based upon the recommendation of the Groseal Department of Public Services Commission, we're asking the Groseal Township Board hereby approve a contract extension with Suez for the operation of the Groseal wastewater treatment plant, based upon the terms and conditions listed in the attached letter, which you all got. Approval is contingent upon review and approval of the contract language by Groseal's legal counsel.
Okay, moved by Trustee Budney, seconded by Treasurer Van Oss.
I did speak with Tom earlier prior to the meeting. He mentioned that he did have the opportunity to review the contract extension, and it appears in order. So, that issue has been resolved. Suez has been operating the plants under a variety of different names since nineteen eighty-seven, so the township has a longstanding relationship with Suez. The DPS Commission beat him up pretty good on this renewal to ensure that the rates and the structure were, met with what the market is paying for these type of services. So, in summary, it's a one-year contract with a CPI increase in the initial year, and then two five-year options. The first five-year option, should the township choose to pick up that option, is two percent plus the CPI. The second five-year option would be CPI on top of that. So, and that would be an annual increase at the Consumer Price Index or whatever meshed consumer price index.
Yeah, it's, it's a, in, in this contract, it's a, it is, and it has been, a combination of, of the EPI for employment, for employee costs, and the CPI for, for the other costs. We've been working under this for, for almost five years now. That's going to continue on. There's one, a two percent hit on the first year, first five-year. I do want to point out, well, first of all, Derek and I and Bill Kostick and Ted met in extensive negotiations with them, but ultimately, they came back and accepted what we wanted, which, which is, we think is good. I did want to indicate that we're extending it. It's up in March. We're extending it for a year. During that time, we're going to do an audit, operational audit, to make sure that we know that, that the plant is running correctly. Am I stating that right?
That's correct. Yeah, we wanted to take the opportunity within that year to make myself familiar with operations, being that I'm new here, and then also do a maintenance audit of the facility, make sure our facility's being taken care of. It's the residence of Groseal's facility. We want to make sure that, that very important asset is, is in good hands. So, we're going to use that year to, to, to review how things are operated over there and the condition, and how things are being taken care of. And, and then, if everything checks out, then there's those two five-year options that are available to us to extend.
And we, we thought that this operational review, this audit, would be, I mean, certainly be helpful to us, certainly, and, and also helpful to Suez or whoever's operating it. So, we have the extension, and then we'll actually go into, we'll have the extension for one year with the audit, and then we'll go into the, the real nuts and bolts of the, of the extension of the contract.
In addition to that, the, the township is required, as, as all municipalities and all operating entities are required to do asset management plans for their sanitary sewer system. So, that asset management plan and the maintenance audit actually mesh really well together. The timing is perfect to, to have those conducted at the same time, because there's a lot of efforts that can be shared with regards to that information gathering. So, now is a great time to do that. That was another reason why we wanted to do this maintenance audit with the asset management plan in the next twelve months.
I have a question for you, Derek. Will you be doing this audit by yourself, department-wise, or will you also be bringing in some outside experts? Will Raines, for instance, or a consultant who's familiar with plants? Or is this something you can do in-house?
Nope, it'll be a consultant that we'll bring in. There's a number of wastewater treatment facilities in the area, the DUO system, the SHUBA system. They have all done maintenance audits. So, we're going to talk to them about what vendors they've utilized, and then put out a request for proposals for those services, so.
And one other question, because I know these young men will be totally interested. Do they still allow a tour of the wastewater treatment facility for a group like this?
I can check with them. Yeah, there are some restricted areas that we wouldn't be able to, to go into. But, yeah, we could see about setting something up. But, yeah, there's, you'll have to change your clothes when you get done being over there.
But it's a critical part of running a community. Let's just say, if things don't work there, we hear about it because they're backing up into your homes. So, this is a critical part of what municipalities do.
And as we talk about careers, as you had mentioned about actuaries and, and whatnot, wastewater treatment plant operators are also in demand. So, anybody interested in that, that's a good route to go, so.
There will always be wastewater.
Yes. Before you leave, any other questions, comments for Derek? All right, you're off the hook.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Based on a recommendation of the Groseal Department of Public Services Commission, the Groseal Township Board hereby approves a contract extension with Suez for the operation of the Groseal wastewater treatment plant, based upon the terms and conditions listed in the attached letter. Approval is contingent upon, well, apparently, it's been reviewed, but approval remains contingent on review, and approval of the contract language by township's legal counsel. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none offered. That carries. Let's move on to action item number three then, actually, number four. Mr. Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. I would like to make a motion to obtain an RFP for the large swimming pool heater.
Support.
Okay, moved by Trustee Nelson, seconded by Trustee Budney. And, do you want to read it? Do, do we want to invite Ms. O'Farrell to give the?
I'll read it, and she can come up and answer all the tough questions. The current pool heater that was purchased in two thousand and twelve experienced several mechanical issues this past season due to corrosion. Heat exchanger, burner tray, temperature sensor, flow switch, and the fire bricks inside the heater. All of these elements have, they experience corrosion and fail to perform. Several repairs were necessary throughout the season to keep the heater optional. Corrosion is caused by the use of chemicals, chlorine and what have you, that are stored inside the pump house, along with, combined with improper ventilation. Alongside this capital improvement, we'll be relocating the chemicals to an outside storage area. Physical impact, none. It is a budget item in the two thousand and twenty rec budget. Ms. O'Farrell?
Did he cover it all? I mean, it needs to be replaced.
Sounds, sounds like he hit on it.
Yeah, well, I wrote that. We made it through the entire season up until the Labor Day weekend, and it finally.
Went out.
Went out. So.
How old is that, is that boiler heater system?
Not very old. And, and again, just the, we use meratic acid and chlorine inside that very small area, and that does cause corrosion. Our chemicals have been actually very well in the swimming pool for those, you know, the residents are there. We track that five times a day. But when you still have a small room with not good ventilation, the corrosion's going to be there. So, and we also have a fairly new small pool heater. When we say large and small, we have a big pool and a small pool. So, this is for the, the big pool. So, I don't want to invest in a new heater without fixing the problem, which is transporting the chemicals to an outside storage area. So, that'll be part of the plan as well.
Kim, would you like to explain the new heater is a lot smaller?
Well.
Than the old one? And the one that's in there now, the building, was built around the building?
Right. I mean, there's two ways we can go. We, you know, we're going to bid out one large pool heater, but I've also talked to a contractor about possibly putting in two small heaters and not running, you know, the one big heater at all times when you have two, you can actually install two small ones into that space. And, you know, at some points, you do need to use both of them, and then at some points, we would only need one on hot days. So, that will conserve our energy as well. I got a couple estimates, just, you know, talking to some, you know, pool people, and it's running about the same, whether we do one large one or two smaller ones. So.
Can we get one large in, in that room currently?
We can. They're going to have to build it in the room. It's going to be a challenge.
And to get the one in there out, we're going to have to destroy it inside the room?
That is correct.
Okay, piece by piece coming out. Okay, thank you.
Are these gas heaters or electric? Or how, how are they powered?
Electric. So, I'm sorry, gas. Yeah, and I, after I said it, I went, wait a second, no gas. Sorry. I was thinking. But, yeah, so it's definitely time just to make some upgrades. We, you know, the pool's being upgraded, you know, each year. I'm purchasing something to keep that facility moving and grooving. Last year, we got the, the filters. So, the water was a lot clearer, new vacuum, those types of things, so.
The pool is still an asset that this community appreciates, you know? Not everyone's a member of a big club, and not all of us live on the waterfront. So, it's a, it's a nice thing that's available for kids and seniors alike. So.
Absolutely.
It's worth, it's worth investing in.
And the Boy Scouts.
Because they do their badges there. Some of them do. So.
Kim?
Just a point of information. You said that it's not very old, but pool heaters traditionally wear out relatively quickly because of the way it's used. It's, water is cycled through it, which influences a lot of oxygen into it. So, twelve years is really a long time on one of those heaters. And I would suggest that if we can get this in with two heaters, it would probably extend the life a little bit.
That's hopefully the plan.
Other comments, questions for Ms. O'Farrell?
Yeah, Kim?
Yes.
I'm, I'm assuming you've done the research, but with technology, are these new heaters any more efficient than, has the efficiency of these pool heaters, have they got, has it gotten better over the years? Can you, are you, are, are you foreseeing a savings on energy?
Definitely gotten a lot better, since I've been running pools for, you know, twenty-five years, and you look back and, you know, seeing the technology and so forth. So, you know, the goal is, you know, my goal is to, just to monitor the, the heating. I know when I first got here, we, the heaters were not turned on at the pool. I think that was our number one complaint. And I'm hearing some giggles back there. So, but, you know, we do make sure that we are monitoring when they're on, when they're off. You know, on a ninety-degree day, we're not turning our heaters on, those types of things. So, you know, just those types of, you know, that's what we do out there, just to preserve our equipment, so.
I assume that you had. I was just curious.
Yeah, yeah. They're, the one that we, the small pool that I think, I'm not sure when that was purchased. I think it was when Ms. Boyd was here. That's a, that's a nice heater, and it's, it's functioning very, very well. But again, I do worry about the corrosion and those types of things in that environment. I don't want to see that small pool heater that she had purchased corrode, and then we got to keep replacing things. So, we got to solve the problem now and put the chemicals outside. So.
Anything else? Okay, those in favor of obtaining an RFP for the large swimming pool heater, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none offered. That will carry. You have more work to do.
We, we might just add an RSP. RFP is a request for proposals. So, she's going to put out an advertisement so that contractors who sell pool heaters can come and place a bid with us and say, we will, we will sell you this product for so much money. And that way, our department and our commission, along with our engineers, will evaluate the bids, and they'll pick the one that's the best fit for the township. And then, it will come back to us to approve it.
Good. All right, next action item, thirty-third District Court proposed budget. Recommendation is, Groseal Town, Township Board of Trustees approve a thirty-third judicial, judicial district court budget for the period one January two thousand and twenty through thirty-one December two thousand and twenty.
Support.
Okay, moved by the supervisor. I'll give this one to the Treasurer, seconded by the Treasurer. Okay, the background is thirty-third District Court, and you guys are all going to find out about when you start driving, because that's where your traffic tickets will go. But that is the local district court, and the court budget is But that is the local district court, and the court budget is divided among the seven, what they call a district control units, which are the seven communities that are part of that district court. Groceal is not the smallest, but we have the smallest caseload, so therefore, our share of the budget is the smallest. But, all the communities have to approve this budget, so we keep the court operating. So, first of all, thank you for keeping our caseload down, and then I'll be, you know, the purpose of this is to get the Board of Trustees to approve the budget. So, our portion of the budget's approved. The other six communities are doing the same thing sometime prior to January 1st. So, questions, comments among the board? Ah, this is an easy one. With none offered, because this is pretty simple. Those in favor of approving the 33rd Judicial Court Budget for the period of 1 January 2020 through 31 December 2020, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None offered? And just for the, let's see, our share is $2,916, 3.8% of the, it's down 3.8% from last year, just a very small part of the budget. Board, thank you for approving that. I'll get that back to Amy, and we can move on to action item number six, which will be me again. Downtown Development Authority Public and Design Enhancement Project. And the recommendation is based on a recommendation from DDA Director and the Downtown Development Authority Board. The Groceal Township Board hereby awards a contract with Spackman, Mossup, Michaels to result in a Macomb Street Master Plan and Engagement Process to Activate Macomb Street based on a proposed, proposal dated November 21st, 2019 in an amount not to exceed $30,100. Waiting for a second.
Port.
Okay, I'll give that to Mr. Budney. Moved by the supervisor, seconded by Trustee Budney, and now I'll hand it over to, about me to read it? Or you could explain it probably better than I can, because you were working this from the beginning, exactly. Angela. Ms. Sukakis is our DDA Director. She's been, all the cool things that are happening on Macomb Street, she's generally the driving force behind it.
And our DDA Chairman.
And Chairman of the Downtown Development Authority is Mr. Ron Moran, but Angela's the better talker.
Wow.
So, I'll just read the history and explanation. The DDA Board is interested in retaining a professional planning and design firm to generate public improvements and design enhancement in the business district, specifically Macomb Street. We asked that the scope of the project included both short and long-term implementable projects that enhance the design, improve overall public impression, and ultimately stimulate private investment. We asked that the firm focus on complementing and connecting the community with the corridor, and that they exhibit the ability to produce a vision that is well-organized, planned, cohesive, and uniquely appealing. An RFQ was released, interview was completed, and a selection was made. Spackman, Mossup, and Michaels provided a proposal that divided, was divided into four task options with the ability to add each onto the project timeline as the DDA Board sees fit. And at this time, the DDA Board selected Task 1, which is the Macomb Street Master Plan Enhancement, and Task 4, which is the Engagement Process to Activate Macomb Street at this time with the option to add the others. But that was a total, and I do have it kind of put together. So, I know I discussed in front of the Board in the past that we had released an RFQ back in August with a submission deadline of September 20th. We had four great proposals come in. We discussed and limited those to three consultant interviews, and then we invited Spackman, Mossup, and Michaels to come back and, with a proposal on the design enhancement portion, and Wade Trim to come back with a proposal on economic development, which we can discuss at a later date. At this point in time, we're interested in starting with Phase 1 and Phase 4 as proposed by Spackman, Mossup, Michaels.
Okay, continuing, RFQ is an acronym for Request for Quotation.
Qualification.
Qualifications.
Right, Request for Qualifications, right. So, we were looking, we were looking, we didn't have an idea in mind of how much we wanted to spend, as opposed, we wanted to look at the qualifications and look at the firm from a different perspective and say, okay, who can achieve this goal for us in the best manner possible? And then, once we selected them, okay, well, let's take a look at what you can do and how you can line it out. And the proposal that they came back with was kind of a nine-month plan. They would start potentially this month, really realistically, probably after the first of the year, with the idea that we would see some real implementable, kind of the low-hanging fruit projects, make a quick difference on Macomb Street. And then, the other two phases that they had outlined for us would be something that potentially we could add later, at a later date, much bigger projects. So, Phase 1, we would expect to see a design that would encompass all of Macomb Street with explanation on how they feel we can achieve what the community and the business, the resident community and the business community are looking for, and they would figure that out from Phase 4, which is the Engagement Process. And they had some really unique ideas on how to engage the community, to figure out what we are looking for to build that Macomb Street Business District.
Angela, will this be brought back to us then, once it's done, once they go through this, before you start implementing anything?
Yes, we would be, and we would engage the Board along the way, too. So, it's not like you'll hear from us tonight and then not again for nine months. We'll engage you along the way.
Because I know, I know, you know, one of the big problems we have on Groceal is finding out what Groceal wants. I mean, from really a good number of people, so I'm real interested in that Part 4, which I, from what I've read, I assume that's the, where they're gonna find out what Groceal wants.
Yes, yes. In some pretty unique ways, too, not the stereotypical ways. They have some interesting ideas on how to capture that information out in the community.
So, it's not from phone calls to us complaining, I guess.
Right, or social media, right.
So, if I understand this right, we're going with Option 1 and 4?
Yes, at this time.
So, we're looking at a total contract cost not to exceed $30,000?
Yes, $30,100.
Now, obviously, we depend on their recommendations, because you'd be looking at ordinance, ordinance modifications. I mean, there's a whole big...
Um, you know, we...
They don't want, that's gonna go on under this thing, I would assume, right?
We're looking at it from a different perspective, so this design enhancement plan would be more like bringing in art pieces, enhancing the landscape design and the look of the street and the appeal, and coming up with some new ways to engage the community to bring them down to Macomb.
Within our framework.
Within our current framework.
Alright, thank you.
Well, that's a really good point. When we do planning for communities, this is really for the benefit of the kids, because I know you know this.
Absolutely, no.
If you know Macomb Street, it's a very long downtown district, and not many towns have a really long one-street downtown. And it's, this has been a 20, 25-year project trying to get, figure out what is it that we can do to help make our little downtown thrive? Part of our problem is we are a bedroom community on the edge of the country. Nobody drives through us to go anywhere. So, they literally have to just come here. We are the destination. And one of the things that Ms. Sukakis does and studied to do is how to develop and make more exciting a community's downtown district. And the businesses put all their money together in a pot, and that's how she is paid, and that's how we come up with projects like the movie night on Macomb Street. You may have gone to last summer, having the food trucks on Macomb Street, having parades. She works with the rec department to make things happen on Macomb Street. And this is just another phase now. 20 years ago, we repaved Macomb Street, and we actually added, get this, sidewalks on both sides of the street. And then, a few years after that, we redesigned the, you know, the streetlights that are on the street, and they call this placemaking. You know, you're trying to make a place attractive that people want to come and spend time and, of course, spend money, and that helps a community to thrive. And so, this is the next step, is looking for community input. What do we want the street to look like? What do we want it to grow into? And I think you have been doing a dynamic job. You and getting the businesses together to join has been really phenomenal. And I have to tell you, Ladies Night Out was a riot.
It was.
And that's really unusual. That doesn't happen in every town, so, very good.
Angela, with, I don't know the exact percentage, but let's just say 50/50. With half of the, with Macomb Street being private residence, the other half being business-oriented, and I, again, I'm not sure about the percentage, but with a master plan, how would that engage the, you know, again, the private residences?
And I think that's really what we're, that's a question that we've had for some time, is engage them and make them feel like, recognize that they're part of that DDA and that street, and making that more of a, and building that part of the community. So, really, you know, we're excited to see what this firm comes back with, because they've done some really cool, unique things in other cities around the country. Many projects in Detroit neighborhoods and New Orleans and all over, really, and they've come up with some good creative ways to engage. I think initially, what we're really hoping they come back with are, is some art placement. There's, you know, a ton of studies and a lot of proof that when you bring art and culture into any community or neighborhood, then that brings people out. So, placement of art up and down the street, and that might be something that we would be able to engage them in as well. And I, you know, I would hope that we would gather input directly from them. I know that we have several residents that I work with on a regular basis that are down there that are willing to jump in and give their input, so.
Now, the decision to award the, this contract with Spackman, Mossup, and Michaels, was that based on their presentation, or was it based on, because in so many things, when you put out a request for, you know, for pricing, quoting, you're looking for the lowest price. How is this?
That's not the case with this, and that's why we went out for the RFQ, so that we could take a look at, you know, all things being equal in terms of price, just assuming, making the assumption that prices would be equal across the border average. Who would we want to take this project on, and who do we think would really give us what we're looking for and to help us meet our end goal, which is bringing people down?
Did they, did they do a preliminary research on Macomb Street? Did they go up and down Macomb? I mean, they're not just taking something out of a book and saying, we've done this project in this city, your town. They've actually, they've actually taken the time and gone up and down Macomb and...
They have, and with technology these days, too, with the Google Maps, I mean, we've had multiple discussions and meetings where you can, while we're looking at it and discussing with them, we can actively talk about, you know, the specific place that we're looking for. And we were able to share some of the thoughts that we had, that we liked across the country and other cities and towns as well. And I think, you know, some of the examples of things that they had done in other cities and communities were really outside the box. So, it wasn't, I feel pretty confident that what we're gonna get from them is not one of those projects that's, hey, this is what's worked in this, this, and this town. It's going to be uniquely Groceal, which is what our hope is.
And I'm thinking that the, you know, residents who are attending and watching this, you know, all the little, little hot-button words, you know, when you have on your presentation, but I think they need to feel comfortable that what you're doing is really, they have some input, and that it's a benefit to them.
Agree.
Alright, thank you. Other comments, questions for Ms. Sukakis? None offered. Based on the recommendation from the, from Downtown Development Authority Director and the Downtown Development Authority Board, the Groceal Township Board hereby awards a contract with Spackman, Mossup, Michaels to result in a Macomb Street Master Plan and Engagement Process to Activate Macomb Street based on a proposal dated November 21st, 2019 in an amount not to exceed $30,100. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That will carry. Thank you. And move us on to number seven, Mr. Nelson.
Seems to be quite busy tonight for a change. It's okay. I'd like to make a motion to accept municipal credit funds from SMART.
Second.
Recommendation, approval to accept municipal credit funds from SMART in the amount of $10,184 to operate the 2019-20 community transportation program.
Port.
Kim, you want to come up?
Any questions? I think we all know what this is.
Why are we getting $10,001, and why did we opt out of SMART?
I wasn't here when that took place.
I was.
Right, so you can tell, go ahead.
It was the right thing to do. This gives us what our residents want.
Right.
Particularly, the senior portion of our residents, and it doesn't give us anything that the residents have demonstrated that they don't want, a little mini bus driving around that would be grossly unused, where this is, this serves exactly what we needed to serve for. Plus, we get the extra 10 grand, which helps pay for the operation of our specific bus.
Correct, right. And that goes towards the senior transportation, so.
We voted to opt out of SMART, gosh, three or four years ago, and...
I think longer than that, actually.
Well, we had to renew our opt-out. And opted to go with funding for our local transportation. Now, this time, we've got the, we have, you have the bus, so, and you're using it. Any complaints?
No, I was just gonna ask, I mean, other than taking the cash, how is it going with your new bus?
We've been offering bimonthly trips for our senior citizens. Our numbers are very, very low. Trying to figure out why that is, trying to talk and communicate to our senior citizens. We're feeling just the consensus is they want to go shopping. We've done some shopping, and we've also advertised for some lunches off island, those types of things, but we're only averaging between five and seven senior citizens on the big bus when we can carry 14. So, you know, if our seniors are listening, we have this beautiful bus, and we feel it's reasonably priced, $7 round trip, and, you know, my crew and my staff, we help our seniors go shopping and take them to Meyer, to Walmart, you know, those types of things, and, you know, I certainly, I certainly don't want to have to call them back and say, the bus is, you know, we're gonna return the bus. So, you know, if the seniors are watching and you want to participate, you know, we're looking at the new schedule for spring and summer. We're putting that together right now. And again, it's gonna be more bimonthly shopping. That's, that's what we're hearing. We're not ready for the casino yet. I know there's been some, some talk about the casino, but I'm also teaming up with Flat Rock Recreation Department and their senior department for bigger bus trips. I do have that information to give to our seniors that, you know, the bigger coach trips on the big buses. And what we will do for our seniors is transport our seniors off the island on the SMART bus over to Flat Rock where they would load the big bus. So, we're definitely gonna be using, you know, the bus for those types of things. But numbers, we, I'd like to see them increase. So, if any seniors are watching, which I know a lot of my seniors that I talk to do watch, you gotta call me and tell me, where do you want to go? I got a driver, I got a bus, and we can take you where you need to go.
Do you pick them up at their homes?
Yes, we do.
Or do they have to, okay? So, this is, this is literally curbside pickup?
Curbside pickup, yep. And we do offer free transportation during our senior citizen luncheons at the farm, which our next one is this Wednesday, so.
And they don't have to join anything?
Nothing.
Or show membership, or income, or anything like that?
Yeah.
Just the seven bucks?
Yep.
Get them on the bus?
That is correct. And we've only had, since I've obtained the bus and we started operations back in July, I have one phone call from one resident that was in a wheelchair that needed transportation to and from their doctor's appointment. Again, this bus is handicap accessible, walkers, wheelchairs, that's what the bus is for. And I've had one resident in six months, so that's where we're at.
Would you be able to do, like, if you, logistically, it might be complicated, I don't know, but a lot of people have appointments, say, at Beaumont South Shore or at Henry Ford Hospital, that you could do a coordinated trip, you know, say, we're going to this place on this day, make your appointments accordingly, or something?
Well, normally, with our, with our smaller transportation, we do do, yeah, we do that. That's, you know, one-on-one, but with the larger SMART bus, you know, that, that we use for senior trips and with, you know, a lot of people and handicap accessible, because our small transportation van is not wheelchair accessible.
Well, and you mentioned working with Flat Rock could, and you may have already done this, coordinate like a trip for the seniors to the Flat Rock Pool or the...
We're working on those types of, those activities as well.
That's also nice.
Because we just started, yeah, we just started utilizing the bus this, this past fall and winter, and that's where you kind of get your consensus from your seniors, what are they, where do they want to go? And again, I'm gonna get the casino trip, that's, that's what I do.
Sounds like you want it.
And word of mouth, right? They'll talk to each other and pass the word. Tell your grandparents, boys.
But, but the shopping, you know, the trips that we have made, I've been on them with Jean, who's our driver, and also Annette, my assistant in the office, and we... And we shop with our seniors. We, we, you know, I'm going up and down every island, reaching for cans and those types of things. And, and they really, really, the ones that have utilized the service really appreciate that. We also help them get their groceries and items to, inside their homes as well. So it's a pretty nice service for our seniors. Absolutely.
How old do you have to be? Is the bus strictly for seniors?
55 and older.
Okay. Just, just want to be clear. I mean, I see a lot of, I see a lot of scouts in the audience here. They may need a field trip to go, a ride to a field trip. That's why I asked the question.
Yeah, that, the bus was obtained through a grant that Ms. Boyd put in, I think it was about five years ago, Dale, if I'm around there, for. And it is specifically and can only be used by our department. It can't be loaned out to any other department in the township. And it is strictly senior citizen use only. And that is in the lease agreement.
Well, I, the reason I asked my initial question was to give you a chance to come up and explain that, get, get that out to the public.
Yeah, we've had a few calls to borrow the bus and unfortunately it is a very, very specific lease. I mean.
Well, thanks very much.
Sure.
Kim, wasn't there a time when you needed a driver and you drove it?
I have driven the bus. Pretty big, but. Yeah, Gene, who's full-time with my department has a CDL and you do not have to have a CDL to drive that particular bus. But he does have the, the bigger license and he's very comfortable driving and enjoys the seniors as well, so.
Anything else for Ms. O'Farrell?
Do the wheels on the bus go round in them?
Okay. All right, with that, let's see. Those, those in favor of accepting municipal credit funds from SMART in the amount of $10,184 to operate the 2019 through 2020 Community Transportation Program, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None offered? We'll go on with that. Thank you, Ms. O'Farrell. That concludes tonight's action items. Turn it over to the clerk. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Supervisor, well, this is the exciting process of managing elections. And next year is going to be a big year with lots of elections. And our deputy clerk, Brian Freel, and his deputy, his assistant clerks and myself, plus a whole team of people from the community work together to run your elections. Well, the laws have changed in the last year and so now people are allowed to vote an absent voter ballot without an excuse. That means you don't have to be literally out of town in order to be able to vote on an absent voter ballot or a senior citizen. And so now anybody can vote an absent voter ballot. And we found that we have a lot of people who like to vote the absent voter ballot. More people like to vote the absent voter ballot than like to go to the polls almost. Now, I like to go to the polls because I consider that, you know, almost a religious right of democracy when you go in and you, you meet your peers and you cast your vote. But because of this, our community and our team has decided we are going to combine two precincts into one and then add an additional absent ballot voter counting board. So the state, State of Michigan Bureau of Elections has now completed the process of combining our precincts four and five. Now, they were both housed in Centennial Farm. So if you were, if you lived in precincts four or five, you voted at Centennial Farm. And you will continue to vote at Centennial Farm. But by combining them into one precinct, we can move a group of poll inspectors here to Township Hall to staff another absent ballot voter counting board. Say that fast three times and you'll see why it's confusing. So there will be no changes for the voters because you'll still be voting at Centennial Farm. But there will be more people counting absent voter ballots. It's hard to believe, but applications to vote for the March 10, 2020 Presidential Primary Election will be available and mailed out by January 10th. So we have a primary, a presidential primary coming up in March of 2020. And if you wish to vote in that, you can send in your application to vote by then. Voters will have a choice of three different ballots. This is new, as far as I'm concerned, a new process. You can choose from a Republican ballot, a Democratic ballot, or a proposal-only ballot. So it would, would be a ballot that has no candidates from either party, but just has the proposals. Which of course you're asking now, there's going to be two proposals. One is for the Groseal Schools Sinking Fund Millage. It's not because the schools are sinking. It's a fund that they use for capital improvements. And one for the Wayne County Art Authority. And so those millages, just for you young people and some people watching, a township like ours, we can actually decide our own taxation. It's called a millage. And if our community has the resolve to want to pool all our resources together, we can put together a, a proposal to put on a ballot. And we ask each other, do we want to raise our own taxes in order to do this? So in the past, we've raised our own taxes to improve our roads. We've raised taxes to buy open space. We have raised taxes to pay for library services. And so these two proposals will be, one, the school is asking for money to make improvements. And Wayne County Art Authority is probably asking for money to support the arts in Wayne County. Finally, and again, you know, four years flies by very quickly. Packets for candidates for township offices will start to be available in January. So anyone who is interested in running for a township position on the board can submit their paperwork, but the paperwork needs to be in no later than April 21st, 2020. And those board positions are the supervisor, the treasurer, the clerk, and four trustees. And unfortunately for you young people, you do have to be of a minimum age to run. I think it's 18, if I'm not mistaken. So not quite as restrictive as, as president where you have to be in your 30s. But if you are interested in running for any of these township offices, come see Brian in the clerk's office and he'll hand you the packet. And just make sure you submit all your paperwork by April 21st, 2020. We had a short meeting before our meeting here tonight, a study session at which Brian gave us an update on where we are with our communications. I think many of you will have noticed our website has a new and improved look. If you haven't looked at groseal.com lately, take a look. It looks really nice and it's very functional. We also have an app called Groseal Connect. And we consider that something of a more immediate resource. Through the connect, you can find out if and when the bridge is going to close or reopen. You can find out when Mr. Budney and Mr. Malvesto are having their question and answer period here at Township Hall. You can find out if the water mains in your community have been shut down through push notifications. So we're making some progress in terms of communicating with our residents in the 21st century, something which I think you kids are probably much more adept at maybe than sometimes we are. So Brian, do you have anything you would like to add? With that, that's the clerk's report. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Treasurer?
Thank you, Brian. The investment report for the month of October shows $9,678,544 invested in various accounts. These accounts generated a total of $16,357 in investment interest with an average rate of 1.28%. Detailed information is available on my website is, and if you just go there and move the cursor over, you can get all the details of where all our funds are invested. The 2019 winter tax bills have been mailed. If you've not received your tax bill, please contact the treasurer's office to confirm that we have the proper mailing address. Every property owner receives a copy of their tax bill. Mortgage companies that request a copy for their escrow or loan receive a duplicate copy of the bill. The 2019 winter tax bills are due February 14th. Residents that are eligible can apply for an extension for the winter due date to April 30th, 2020. Deferment applications are available at the treasurer's office. If you need some help, just talk to Annette. She'll walk you through the process. The 2020 PET tags are now available at the treasurer's office. Approval of the valid rabies vaccination is necessary to obtain the license and the cost of the license is $6. I am the liaison to the Commerce Park Commission and that meets the 16th, I believe, which is the third Monday. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Treasurer. We'll move on to trustee liaison reports. I'll start with Mr. Budney.
Ah, thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Tomorrow, there's a DPS Commission meeting here in the boardroom, 7 o'clock. We will have a study session and I believe it's starting at 6:30. Prior to that, our big issue tomorrow will be drainage. So if you want to hear about drainage and drainage problems on the island that people are having, come to that. No ZBA this month, that's zoning board of appeals. We don't have any cases. And we will not be having a Q and A session, a question and answer session this month. Our next Q and A will be in January, January 22nd. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Budney. Mr. Malvesto?
Thank you. I'm going to make a plea. It's that time of year, it's Christmas holidays are coming up. The fire department, the Goodfellows, they do a drive for food for, for gifts for kids, for families, needy families. You know, not only in our township, but around. It would be great if everybody just took some time, go to Kroger's, go wherever. And don't, don't, you know, don't spend a lot of time going up and down the aisles. Go to the soup aisle, you know, pick up a, pick up a case of chicken noodle soup. Pick up a case of Denny Moore beef stew, drop it off at the, drop it off at the, the fire police department. There's a lot of people out there that could really use it. And, and just keep in mind that hunger doesn't, just doesn't come around this time of year through the holidays. Hunger is a 12-month issue for a lot of people. Young children needing healthy meals. Not the, not the Ding Dongs and Twinkies, but meals, meals that really mean something to them. So I, open your hearts, open your pocketbooks, drop some food off. I'm sure Chief Murdock would be more than happy to get it distributed wisely. The second thing is this Saturday is stuff the bus. Duncan, this is, this is the bus drivers' school transportation. And they will park a bus in front of the public safety building in the parking lot there. And they're just looking for donations of children's toys. Could be clothing, toys, anything, right? Food, doesn't really matter, does it? And that'll all be distributed out to, again, needy families. So open your pocketbooks, open your hearts and make it happen. It's a good thing. Makes you feel good this time of year, but like I said, don't forget, hunger is a, is a 12-month, 12-month a year issue. And Goodfellows go out of their way to help a lot of needy families. Last thing is Duncan, where? We're well over 600 calls for the, to this date, for the first of December. We won't know until the end of the year how many calls that, you know, between EMS and fire that we've actually made. But it's a busy group of young men. Well, some of them are young men. Yeah, not Duncan. They're, they're a busy group of men and this time of year it gets even busier for, for whatever reason. So as always, my hat's off to that, that whole crew in the, in the fire, you know, the fire and EMS. It's, they're great guys. So keep them in your, in your prayers, keep them in your hearts. I think that's it. But remember, stuff the bus Saturday, 9 to 12, correct? Or nine, eight, eight to two, excuse me. You can't miss that big yellow bus parked in front of the fire department. So just bring some toys, bring some goodies, bring some clothes, bring some food. Give with your heart. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malvesto. Mr. Nelson?
I would like, first of all, everybody have a very Merry Christmas. I know this is a little bit maybe early in the meeting to do this, but I have to get in before, I can't get in because Mr. Budney always seems to take up most of the time about these things. No, I'm just kidding. Anyway, have a Merry Christmas. And number two is I'd like to have Kim O'Farrell come up and give a update on the Recreation Department. Thanks, Kim.
Thank you. Lots of events going on. Even though it is not summer, we still keep recreation in the community actively involved with things. Coming up this Saturday is our Second Annual ELF Workshop. That is the 14th from 10 a.m. to noon. I think we have about 25 kids so far registered, which is great. And we will take registrations up through Friday, the day before. Again, this is a pre-registration because we do have to have the supplies and the snacks ready for the kids. So we want to make sure every kid that is signed up is able to do two different crafts that day. So, and we wrap them up and this is a good way, and yes, you can drop your kids off. We take care of them for two hours. And we do have a lot of helpers that day. Builders Club will be there to help again. And they did a wonderful job this past Saturday with Breakfast with Santa, so I wanted to do a shout out to them as well. And we also have some high school National Honor Society students coming to help out with our staff this weekend. So get signed up for that. It's a great event. Coming up in January, I just wanted to get some of the, all these events are in the Groseal profile. But we did make a change to this event. It was mother-son date night. So we had a mother-son date night and a mother-son bowling night and a daddy-daughter dinner dance. And we felt that was not proportionally balanced with the moms and dads. So we turned this one into family date night. Everything's the same. We started this last year. Bouncy houses, pizza, ice cream bar photos. It's a fun night. So we're just opening up that program to families instead of it has to be a mom and a son type of thing. So just wanted to announce that change. And then the tradition mother-son bowling night, yes, I had a typo on my flyer. That is February 21st. That is a traditional recreation event that's been with our department, I believe, for 10 years now. Annette put this together and we do get a very, very nice turnout. We take the moms and the sons bowling to Woodhaven Lanes and you can get registered for that. And the daddy-daughter dinner dance, this one fills up very, very quickly. We actually had to turn a few people away last year and that's heartbreaking. And we had to do that just because of the capacity inside the area that we are using at the middle school. So please try to make sure you get registered for this event. It is limited tickets and we are filling up very quickly and that is February 7th. Also, just a couple announcements. We also have the Santa mailbox that is located on the Macomb Commons. For those of you that attended Island Fest, just a shout out to Angela. What a great event. She put this thing together detail by detail. And I just wanted to say thank you as a resident as well of this island. It, it's just fun to be there. And Angela, I love working with you and it was a great event. And for those of you that didn't see that, the Santa mailbox is right there and we are accepting the, the letters till December 20th. Not me, but we make sure Santa gets those. So just make sure you drop your kids, the child's name and the mailing address on the envelope. Also, the senior luncheon is this coming Wednesday. And that is at Centennial Farm at 12:30. It's $10 per person. And we will be having the traditional turkey dinner with all the fixings. And again, free transportation on that day. So just call the recreation office, hop on the list and we will make sure to pick you up. And also I wanted to do a shout out to the Groseal Garden Club. I attended the annual Christmas auction on December 2nd at the farm. And what a nice event the garden club put on. They, they do so much work for the Goodfellows. And auction, I know Chief and I were sitting there, Angela was in the corner and it was, it was just a great event. So just a, a nice thank you to the Art Garden Club that really puts their heart and soul into that event. into that event. Also, the Historical Society Holiday Boutique is going on through December twenty-second, and that's at the Customs House, if you need to do some last-minute shopping. I know some residents that have attended, I know Chad's been there supporting. What a great event, another community group that puts their heart and soul into helping the community with some things. The hours for that is Friday from two to eight, Saturdays and Sundays from eleven to six. And that is all I have.
Last-minute shopping? There's, there's two and a half weeks till Christmas. There's plenty of time left. Thank you, Kim. Mr. Nelson?
I just want, hey, Kim, I'm picking on you. Who does your artwork? For your posters, for your, great stuff.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Nelson, and Ms. O'Farrell. Mr. Bledcher.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. I have three reports from each of the three commissions I'm the liaison for. The first is the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Commission. We are in the process of developing a long-term maintenance plan after there will be the completion of an asset management analysis, as recommended by our Chair, Brian Pollack. Mr. Pollack happens to be the SEMCOG Advisor relating to transportation for pedestrians and advisory with the bicycles for Southeastern Michigan Council of Governments. We are also looking at improving safety with signs at intersections, as recommended again by Chairman Pollack. Second commission that I sit on is the Open Space Greenways. We are in the process of working on the trail that will reconnect Ferry Road through the woods to Gage. That has begun with the cleaning of yard waste, leaves, grass clippings, et cetera, from the Ferry Road opening. Tom from TNT has indicated they are going to move forward as weather permits. What that translates into dry, drier, and driest weather. Right now, we're having wet and wetter. They have been able to do some of the initial work with the cleaning, but in order to putting in the equipment and drop off, drop the chips and all of the grating that goes with that, it has to be considerably drier. We're looking at anywhere from a quarter of an inch on and rain in the next twenty-four hours to forty-eight hours, and that, of course, makes things too soggy for them to bring in trucks. So we are hoping to start that as soon as weather permits. There is going to be a meeting in January to discuss the plans for trails with Meridian, Wright Woods. That will be January seven, two thousand and twenty, Tuesday at seven PM in this building. We have been approached by half a dozen, seven homeowners that are in the area of Park Lane in Manchester, who have some very deep-rooted concerns about a trail that would start there and going into what was Wright Woods, now Meridian Woods. We are going to have a session on that on January seven. Everybody is welcome to attend. If you have thoughts about it, the trails behind that property are among the most heavily used in the township. But again, we have neighbors that have concerns, and everybody is welcome to attend. Let us know what you think. It is January seven, two thousand and twenty, at seven PM. And I also regret to advise that one of our commission members lost her spouse, Dick Nielsen, who passed away approximately a week and a half. Pat has been on the commission for the better part of a decade. She has been a terrific, just a terrific member of the commission, and she has been supporting her husband, and we are all mourning his loss. They were terrific people, and she's just a terrific lady, and anybody who knows her, I think, would agree. BPAC again meets on the Thursday, the sixteenth, at seven-thirty. That is the third Thursday, again, in this room. And if anybody's interested, come on in and see how Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Commission works. And the final commission that I have the pleasure to be liaison to is the Groseal Police Commission. And I would start out tonight on behalf of Chief Warnock and all of the fine ladies and gentlemen that work in the department. We are hoping and wishing that all of you have a very safe, enjoyable, and responsible holiday season. Please don't drink and drive. We had another three OWIs last month, hoping that we can all enjoy the holidays without having drinking and being behind the wheel, which causes problems for everybody, hurt yourself, hurt somebody else, and a lot of legal problems. So please find a designated driver if you're going to a party where you're going to be drinking, and please drink responsibly and enjoy the holidays. Last month, statistics for the Police Department, and all the scouts here might be interested in knowing what we do. It's considerable amount of work. There was fifteen thousand four hundred and ninety-four miles that were driven by our officers last month. We responded to twenty-six alarms. We were involved in forty-five rescues. There were three assault and batteries. We had eighty-five nine-one-one calls, with a cumulative number of one thousand two hundred and seventy-seven calls that were placed to the Groseal Police Department for some kind of assistance. That's better than thirty a day, and actually forty a day. I would also note that last month, our officers issued a hundred and thirty-seven verbal warnings. Again, we had the three OWIs, and we issued twenty-seven security notices. The verbal warnings for the year total one thousand four hundred and twenty. We had thirty-five OWIs operating while impaired for the year-to-date, and a hundred and ninety security notices. That's when you leave your garage door open, or something is an invitation, there's the common term porch pirates and, and others. We send you a little notice, a little reminder, can you lock things up? Can you take care of your property so it doesn't invite another statistic on the police report? So I would also indicate that with the Groseal, with the Groseal Police Department's activities, last month, we had two people, year-to-date, that have been injured. Motorcycle crashes, we have not had any in two thousand and nineteen, we had one in two thousand and eighteen. And our deer car crashes are up slightly. We had nine for November, year-to-date is twenty-seven. Last year, we had six in November, twenty-three year-to-date. So they're out there. Our officers report that they're seeing deer that will come to the edge of the road, look both ways before they cross. They have lost their fear of people, they've lost their fear largely of our pets and our animals. So please be careful. I watched a neighbor the other day, blew her horn to try and get one to move off the road. Didn't really move very fast, and looked at her and says, "I'm going to leave when I want to leave," and proceeded to march down the center of Ferry Road. Please be careful, this is the time of year when they're very active with the rut, and they are everywhere. The numbers that we started out with in two thousand and nine, approximately three hundred and seventy-five on the island, and we're about three hundred and seventy-two right now, but they are there. Just be careful, watch for them, and keep your, keep your garage doors closed, if you could, please. And again, on behalf of everybody with those three commissions, happy holidays, please enjoy yourselves, drink and drive responsibly, and look forward to seeing two thousand and twenty. Merry Christmas, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Bledcher. Let's see, Township Attorney, who said he didn't have anything to report, but apparently he found something.
I thought maybe you addressed a little bit with the adoption of the, oh, all of you voted on that tonight, and I think you, what you saw from those documents is that Groseal Township with Gibraltar and Rockwood only account for approximately twelve percent of the total operating budget there of approximately two-point-two million dollars. With that, the other, you know, Woodhaven, Trenton, and Gibraltar and Brownstown run the majority of the, of the cases through the, through the docket. We've, we've spent a little bit of time now with Amy Zawaki, who's the Court Administrator at the Thirty-third District Court, and she has called upon Groseal, Gibraltar, and Rockwood to look at modifying their prosecution schedules. There's been some modifications in the indigent defense counsel standards, which require that now individuals are entitled to counsel, the same counsel from start to finish. So what that means is the, the individuals that can't afford an attorney for themselves, that have one appointed through the court, they're entitled to that same attorney from arraignment all the way through. We, we, it's not an uncommon practice that you have, have an individual in there for an arraignment, an initial pre-trial. If it gets bumped for some reason, they wind up being with a different counsel, and at times becomes difficult. So it's not necessarily, but they are going to change, the three of us, Gibraltar, Rockwood, and Groseal, to every third week from twice a month. Just thought you should be aware of that, if anybody wants to talk about me and those The attorneys for all three communities, we're very concerned about what that means for our communities and the length of time, our docket schedules on those given days, et cetera, et cetera. We, we've promised to speak with the Court Administrator on a regular basis, once those are set, to make sure that the standards are appropriate, and that we're not getting potentially overwhelmed, or creating situations where you have an adjournment, and you get one adjournment, and the attorney can't make it the next time. Now you're talking six weeks before a case is back up in front of the judge. So we are going to watch that. It will change, that'll be effective with January one. If anybody has any questions about it, you can get in touch with me, but it's not that major. Just thought, since you did vote on the proposal tonight, you should be aware of it. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Sertie. Mr. Im.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. I have a few brief items I'd like to report to the board and the community. Number one is Township Hall holiday schedule. Township Hall will be closed for Christmas, Tuesday and Wednesday, December twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. So that week will be open Monday, Thursday, Friday. And the following week for New Year's, Township Hall will be closed Tuesday and Wednesday, December thirty-first and January first. Again, we'll be open that week, Monday, Thursday, Friday. So plan your schedules accordingly of Township business. One item I'd like to say, and I had a conversation with a resident a few weeks ago, and we talked about volunteers, and we talked about insurance. And it, it doesn't apply strictly just to volunteers that may be doing a deer call, or volunteers that are working in rec programs. It's all volunteers at the township. And they said, "Oh, I can't believe that none of the volunteers at the township have ever been covered for liability insurance." Well, so I just want to set the record straight. All of the Township volunteers are covered for liability insurance. They have been, and they still are. The issues that had taken place in the past, there was questions about what other coverage is, healthcare, whether or not they had workman's comp, insurance coverage. The answer is no, they never have, and they don't. So I just wanted to set the record straight, that we have updated insurance form, and a waiver form, because of the questions that were asked on and off the past year and a half. We had the attorney involved, the insurance carrier involved, our agent. So we made some clarifications to make it very clear to all the volunteers that, what they're signing up for. So, but I just felt it was important to report that the volunteers have been covered for insurance and still are. The other item that I would like to say is, congratulations, kudos, thank you to Priority Waste, the transition. My office has received very few complaints, and I think that, that, that should follow a trail of congratulations to the DPS, the entire staff, the director, as well as the DPS Commission, for working together and having the information outreach. So I ask board members, have you had, thank you. I was very, very pleased for my end of things. So with that, have a great year, and see you next year.
Thank you, Mr. Im. I guess it's my turn. The only thing I could add on, on the Priority Waste is some confusion initially over recycle. If you all got mailed the, the flyer from Priority Waste, again, restating what we said before, the recycling world has changed. Follow the guidelines in, in the flyer you received. If you have questions, we'll get more flyers, more information out to you. So a bunch of topics. First of all, Mr. Coquas, do you have an update on DDA events coming up? So I, I, it'll be January, before you cook something else up. These two start working together, I get nervous because they just, they, they're, they're pretty tight. Okay, Island Glow was our last event, and that, that was a lot of fun. It was relatively mild by previous Island Glow standards, but some of the trustees were there, Santa was there. It was, it was a good time. Want to thank, first want to thank all the businesses that participated, and everybody who showed up. It was, it was just a good time. Ms. O'Connor spoke briefly about our communication capabilities through the website and the app. Another thing we're considering, or what we're interested in is your concerns, your desires, your interest in those events that we video, the, the meetings we video, the community events that we video. What are you interested in? Let us know, one way or the other, what you're interested in seeing, what you don't think we should be wasting our time on, on our, on our three channels. Well, one on Comcast, one on TNT, and one on WOW. So what you want to see, what you don't want to see. Obviously, there's a minor price tag to some of it, if we want to expand it, if we want to contract it. So it's, again, it's what the residents want. We'll do our best to provide you with that service, keep you informed of what your Township Government's doing, and other fun things going on. We all, hopefully, were advised of the tragic loss of Mayor Trenton Kyle Stack. It was a real shock, absolutely totally unexpected, as are all passings. But, you know, the, the three communities, our Groseal, Riverview, and Trenton, have always been working together very closely, especially with the events going on in the, in the local community. She never hesitated to call me, we had our cell phone numbers, we communicated all the time. Be sorely missed. I'm sure her replacement, Steve Zepa, will, and I spoke to him the other day, and, and he's ready to pick up where she left off. But it, it's just going to take a while to get that, that relationship going. Look forward to working with him, and we'll keep looking after the Downriver Communities and, and the McLough cleanup. So Kyle, thanks for your help for all those years. Spent a morning at a meeting with the Wayne United Census. It was, actually, it was one of the best meetings I've attended. It was well, well-organized and very informative. For your perspective, the census, obviously, every ten years by the Constitution, the, Congress has mandated everybody be counted in the, in the, within the confines of the country. So this being a, a zero year, two thousand and twenty, the census takes over again. The last census we demonstrated, Michigan demonstrated, we lost population, we lose a seat in the House. It's why it's very important that we, and the watchword for this year is, count everyone one time in the right place. So the basic census questions, which will come out in March, will be, go to a specific address. How many people live here? And there's a couple more questions. What are their ages? Something on, on ethnicity. They didn't add, I don't think they ever added the citizenship. There may be more questions, but the only ones that have to be answered is, how many people live here, period? And beyond that, ages, et cetera. And you'll see that. We haven't seen the forms yet, but that's, that's what we were briefed. It's very important. Ideally, you'll be able to fill it out online, and we will give out further instruction when that comes out. That's the easiest way to do it. You do it at your convenience. If you need help, if you need us to set up a laptop somewhere to help somebody out, or come in and we'll help you at the administration, we'll get that in, we'll make it work for you. That'll be followed up by a mailer. If you didn't, if your address didn't respond online, within a certain amount of time, you'll get something in the mail. And it'll have those five questions on it. And if in a certain amount of time, we haven't heard from you by mail, someone will knock on your door, which is the absolute worst way to do it. But that's the depth that we're mandated to go to, to complete this census. Again, it's very important, because I think there's six hundred and seventy-five billion dollars nationwide that are distributed based on populations in various communities. So we want to count everybody. We want to count everybody once, and in the right place, but we want to count everybody. Dale, could you turn over that award? Last week, I was at the, I was invited to the American Public Work Association Downriver Branch Awards Lunch. Thank you, Dale. And this year, again, Groseal Township was awarded, I was in the one million to five million range, the award for the Park Lane Pavement and Water Main Replacement. I just, very proud of the efforts of your, our DPS, our DPS Commission, our DPS Director, bidding out to, it was bid agare, outstanding job. I got, I heard nothing but compliments on the performance of the contractor, how quickly they got the job done, the courtesy and professionalism of the crews working there, and our guys coming back later, our DPS come back. And our guys coming back later, our DPS come back and some contractors on the remediation to restore the landscape. So, there's a picture of it. Unfortunately, it's pretty much a dead end street now, but, but the water main was the big thing that had to be replaced. When we had the pressure surges, that water main was rupturing about every 50 feet every other day. So, brand new water main, it's going to outlast all of us. Roads paved, Wayne County allowed us to repurpose some funds to complete the pavement. It was a good project, well executed, finished on time and finished with the residents happy. So, the result was, we get another award for it. So, DPS, thanks. And Charlie Rains, or Charles Rains Company, Sohail and crew who are the engineering firm, it's just well done and I'm just proud to get awards like that. Let's see, on a less, I'm going to say in a less enlightened note, the, we're all probably aware of the shoreline collapse up at the Detroit waterfront, the storage area, normally aggregates. And I just, it just irritated, it made me actually foaming mad that all these organizations, all these publications coming out with just, just poor, very poor reporting, very poor journalism. Let's see, I've got the headlines, here it is. Cranes: Site Contaminated With Uranium Partially Collapses Into Detroit River. Winds Star: Site Contaminated With Uranium Partially Collapses Into Detroit River. Detroit Free Press: Uranium Contaminated Site Collapses Into Detroit River. All out on December 5th and 6th. Well, the problem was, it wasn't contaminated with uranium. It was absolutely poor journalism. And one phone call to Eagle, Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, they would have told them, they'd been out to the site, they were out at the site last spring, thoroughly tested the site, there was no radiation above background levels determined then. So I called my contact at EPA and I caught him Friday morning after he had just left the site. He was there, FBI was there, Eagle was there, no background, no radiation above background levels. And that finally came out in the Eagle press release. If you're interested in it, they found the range from four micro wrenches per hour, normally background levels between five and eight. This was on the water. And within the crevices at the site itself, where theoretically you would expect radiation to prevail if it were ever there, the readings ranged from three to five micro wrenches per hour, again, as opposed to the background of between five and eight. So, for all that short-term terror that these newspapers pushed out on us, just shameful that they didn't do their duty, make a couple of phone calls and find out what they really wanted to say. It was just very disturbing and it, it, it doesn't help us a bit. We are looking into, because it, there was the potential and Great Lakes Water Authority said, "We have no indication of any, of any radioactive material in the water." They're testing and if, depending on how they come up with or cost, we're looking into maybe doing some testing ourselves. But again, no radiation entered the water. Shame on those newspapers for putting that publication out there and scaring people unnecessarily. So anyway, that was my vent and Chief Wornick had something he wanted to, a presentation he wanted to make and then we'll move on from there. Chief?
Good evening, everyone. I'm just going to give you a little bit of update on the deer call situation. I made this up approximately a month ago or so. Groseal Deer Call Plan will be conducted during the winter of 2020 under Groseal Township Deer Management Policy, which dated back to January 12th, 2009. Purpose of the policy is to maintain a healthy deer herd with sustainable habitat while reducing the probability of deer car and deer aircraft crashes. Approval for all deer harvesting has been sanctioned through the Groseal Township Board, the Michigan Department of Natural Resources and the Department of Agriculture. The deer call operations will be performed by law enforcement personnel, approved by myself. Shifts will be adequately covered to make up for those officers patrolling the deer call and not on the official schedule. Overtime for this operation will be distributed under the 2019-2020 annual budget. The target population will be female deer. The Department of Natural Resources allot a varied amount of deer permit or damage permit tags annually. We anticipate an improved number of deer herd management tags to be 100 for the 2020 deer call. Paperwork has been submitted and we expect delivery of the tags at any time. We just received, and we have 100 tags, we just received last week. Officers conducting the deer call will be responsible for field dressing the deer. That's fun. City Light will be responsible for processing and distributing events and to feed the homeless or underprivileged. We currently have the commitment from City Light to process 100 deer. City Light is a nonprofit Christian organization reaching out to the inner city of Detroit and its needs. City Light works through ministries that need extra help and support to serve the poor, the homeless, the drug addicted and the weary searching for hope. Should additional resources be required to complete the service to the community, other organizations or individuals tending to people's basic needs for food will be utilized. An aerial drone and other aerial resources will be used to obtain an accurate deer count population within the township. What that means is after the deer call is done, February, March, when there's still snow on the ground, I talked to DNR, they're probably going to get one of their helicopters up. We're probably going to talk to the guy, the man here that has the helicopters too, so we can get a good count. It's easier to see them when there's snow on the ground than when there's trees, you can't see them. They hide so well, it's hard to see them even in the snow. We plan on doing that. The operations will take place on all township properties deemed appropriate and approved by the police chief and the township manager. All reporting of deer harvested shall be reported in accordance with MDNR, Michigan Department of Natural Resources regulations. Also, I want to say one thing, it is, I want to let everybody know, it is against the law to feed deer in the state of Michigan. I want everybody to go by that because there's a lot of deer in these subdivisions. And I know people feed them. You have to stop feeding them so we can draw them out to the wild, to the open space areas where we can take care of them. We can't go into neighborhoods, it's just not, it's just too dangerous. So please stop feeding the animals. You can be ticketed for it and we might start doing it. So, I'm just letting everybody know that. A bird feeder is fine. I don't want people to come back and say, "I feed, I have a bird feeder deer." Yeah, they do that, but that's okay, a bird feeder is fine. Yeah, you can do that, but they're smart, God, they're smart. So, that's it. We're going to do our best job and we're going to start Jamie first and then we're going to take care, hopefully take care of the problem.
And then, from that end, we just keep, we just keep the operation going, quiet as possible, get the job done and make the island just a little bit safer for both the deer and for the residents.
Please, everybody should slow down. It's an extra 10, 15 seconds to get where you're going. It's, especially October, November, December, that's the worst months. And after that, they calm down a little bit. This is the worst month right now. Just slow down a little bit. Like you say, we're, we're up four from last year, which isn't bad, which isn't bad, but still, I like to get it down. So, we're going to try our best and take care of the problem.
Thanks, Chief. Reminded me with that 10 or 15 second comment on the bridge. I call it Mesa Island. It confuses the people of the county because of them, it's the East River Road Bridge. But, we put the signs, and then, again, that was something we discussed on how to slow the traffic down crossing that bridge. And the chief went out on a limb and just, "We'll put stop signs there," advising people to come to a complete stop before crossing the bridge and then cross it slowly. And my personal observations, I've seen most people are stopping and crossing it slowly. We have your attention. And again, I threw out more, just as a, just a friendly reminder that it might take, it may add another 10 or 15 seconds to your travels that time, but you might keep the bridge viable for a little bit longer. It, it does, it does, what the engineers told us, it does make a difference. So, those of you who are complying and driving across it slowly, thank you. Those who aren't, please consider, you know, sacrificing another 10 or 15 seconds for your community and slowing down and crossing the bridge. Our Boy Scouts are here for a reason. Who's, can I get a spokesman for the troop to introduce? Well, there was a, introduce you and why, what's your purpose here tonight, other than to make sure we're earning the princely sums we're paid?
All right, so yeah, my name's Hayden Swan. I'm the Assistant Senior Patrol Leader for Troop 1261. Today, we are here for the Citizenship in the Community Mayor Badge and one of the prereqs is to come to a township meeting or city meeting township today and find an issue that you guys discuss and have a disagreement on and we have to pick a side. Today, I didn't really see you guys disagree on anything, you kind of just...
He came to the wrong meeting.
Yeah, came to the wrong meeting. But I, I'm still, they all have their own opinions on it, so they'll still be able to get that requirement done and marked off. So I thank you for your, your time. Thank you for inviting us. Yeah.
Let me pull the board. Is there anything we'd like to see your troop debate and bring us, bring us your advice, your thoughts, your conclusions? You don't have to answer me now, but we'd, I'd love to hear if you, ask guys, you know, what would, what would the board like to hear from you? What would, what would your troop consider a controversial decision or decision where the board might need a little guidance? Something upcoming, something we've done in the past, something that's in the mill right now?
Yeah, we got a couple hands. Macomb Street.
There's, Ms. Secocas is our DDA Director, she's running with that. She would love, and again, it's your, it's your business district, it's your downtown. So, she wants to know, you know, what all age groups, what all interests want to see on Macomb Street. So, compile something, what you'd like to see, what you don't want to see and express that to her. We'll discuss it at a DDA meeting. It's an excellent idea. Give them, give me one more.
Anyone else? Hayden.
We'll, we'll discuss that. Unfortunately, there's a, okay, give me, give me one more.
I think, I think for Groseal to attract people, I think we should have like the world's largest like thermometer or the world's largest clock or like something big. Because then people, then we have a billboard right by the tree bridge and the paybridge and people will be like, "Oh my, the world's, the world's largest thing." They go to Groseal, they see it in Macomb and they go away and you get the money. You get the clock and you get the rabbit.
I, I didn't know it was that simple. I didn't know it was that simple. You've made my night. All right, you've, you've, you've opened the door, so let Ms. Secocas know what you think you'd like to see on Macomb Street. Thank you. Thank you, Troops 1261.
Brian, I think you ought to have a couple hours with our township treasurer and come up with some of these ideas.
Mr. Supervisor, the, the young man, the young man that had the idea about Groseal having the, this attraction, would you stand up, please? And what was your name? Well, well before your time, we used to have what was known as the Groseal Wonderwell. And people would come from all over to get this stinky mineral water because they thought it was healthy and they'd come to see the Groseal Wonderwell. You missed it by about 40 years.
Well, heck, that concludes, on that happy note, I'll conclude my report and by the way, thank you. And with that, I'll step onto our discussion item tonight. Mrs. Frucci, try to match that, but we have a discussion item on a legacy library that Ms. Frucci's been working on for some time. So, the discussion time is yours.
I have some of our planning committee. This began as a mission or a vision and we've been meeting, it's sort of at our home to make this happen. This would be, it's called a legacy library because we plan to have the original D there. I've talked to Potawatomi descendant who would do an Indian display. So we're calling it the Legacy Library, but we have been not an official committee. The plan is, and you can see the sketch here, to build a reading library, a legacy library, right on the grounds where the 1911 building once stood. And it's an empty lot right now. And it would have a water view with windows on the water and it would be a place for people to read a favorite book. We're hoping we can work with the Trenton Library to make it a lending library. And that's one of the missing elements on Groseal is a library. So, we've been meeting since August. We've met with the architect, the same guy, the same firm that did the makeover of the Township Hall here from an old hangar. So, he has the skill to render us this library. And what we're requesting, I, I sent out a little background so you knew how this all started. And we're requesting the Township Board to make us an official committee, a planning committee, a legacy library planning committee, to give us a little more status. Because we've been meeting casually at our house and we've been meeting since August and I have a couple of our planning committee volunteers with me. And that's our request, why we're here, is we're hoping that the Township Board would designate us as an official township meeting, planning committee. And we hope that in the near future, we'll come up with a solid plan for a legacy library built on the grounds where the old 1911 building once stood. It's empty right now and the old high school once stood. So that's basically it. If you have any questions from us, what our plans are or...
Are we going to fund it?
All right. Past millages has, have gone down because they were very sizable millage requests. What we're doing is we're also a fundraising committee. And we're planning to have a fundraiser and invite people from Groseal who feel that a library is a missing element and would help fund it. So, it's really, the, the building itself will be, fall back on our shoulders to fund. And in the future, we're hoping we can get a millage that would cover the operating costs of operating the legacy library.
What would happen if you didn't get the millage? Would we have an empty building?
Well, we're, that's part of our project is to build up enough sentiment for the library that we'll get the funding. And we'll have a fundraiser before the millage election. And if the fundraising is successful, then we feel that the millage would help operate the library. And it just happens, the Trenton Library, head of the Trenton Library lives on Groseal and she's supportive and she's going to be meeting at our next meeting, which is the end of December.
How well has this been received by the, obviously you're going to be using some of the school parking lots, some of the school facilities. How, what's been the school's position?
The school supports the idea, but they want to make sure that we have the millage to operate it because their concern was, we might have the building and the millage wouldn't pass. Well, yeah. But we'll have, the building will not be built until we know we have the funds to operate it.
I know you have, you have an architect's rendering of a, you know, proposed structure, but what kind of dollar figure are you talking about?
The architect has come up with $600,000.
I heard my name, but I, oh.
Bill wants to say something.
You can, you can make it now or make it public comments, so go ahead and make it now while, unless, Ms. Frucci, would, do you, it's, it's, it's your, it's your presentation, it's your discussion, so if you want to, if you want to turn the microphone over to Mr. Hyall, it's up to you.
Fine with me.
Thank you. This is very brief, but when I was a senior in high school, I can remember that Ingsdale High School spent $5 million to build a high school. And the community, for two years, did not choose to vote for millage to operate it, it sat vacant. Because of that personal experience, I'm suggesting that the question you brought up, Jim, is a valid one and that we need to address that with great care. a valid one, that we need to address that with great care. That's the point I wanted to make.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ohio. So, the, the proposal in front of the board is, do we want to make this, obviously, we're not going to vote on this tonight, but the board needs to discuss the idea of making this an official committee, so you can continue your pursuit of, A, working with the schools, a millage, any, I don't think there's any zoning concerns, because schools are, Tom is not so sure. Anyway, peel back that onion a little bit further. But that'll be, that'll be a topic for the board to discuss at a future, at a future meeting.
I think we need a study session, because, number one, we need to decide who it's going to report to, and who's going to direct it, whether it's going to be the board or not the board.
Yeah, just like, like we have done with all the other committees and commissions. Again, it's, I just remember the legacy of millage failures for libraries. And as you remember, I was working hard to try to get the 1911 building converted into a library. Yeah, well, and it failed. So, the voters have spoken.
But we do, we do have a conflict now for the scouts to consider.
There you go. And there, that might be the group that would be using the library for decades to come.
Does Groseal need its own independent library?
In one comment, Jackie Shannon is on our committee, and she has something you wanted to say.
Do you want me to add that, or a Plan B?
I also wanted to mention that we do have a Plan B, like occupying maybe one of the buildings on Macomb as a Plan B. And also, I'm not sure if Pam mentioned this or not, I was listening, that the millage that we are currently paying to Trenton would most likely cover the lending library. So, the only thing we need to be able to do is get the building built, and/or occupy building on Macomb.
Would that millage force us to withdraw from the community library in Trenton?
That's why we want to meet. That's why we want to become a more legitimate.
Okay. Well, you don't have to be a committee to get these questions answered. She's right there, and she's, is our library, what's your, you're the conduit to the library, so...
Even if, even if it's a lending library, which would be still part of Trenton.
Yeah, there would be, you would have to go to some...
I think it's worth it.
I mean, there may be precedent. I'm not saying that's a showstopper, but we need answers to that before we, before we let you go, you would need answers to that before you started pursuing a millage, or a change in our relationship with the Trenton Veterans Library.
Just so you know that we have some depth to our thought. Just so you know, we have some depth to our thought here, considering this library.
I, I assume, with Ms. Fruci, I'm sure, I'm sure you put some thought into this.
And Jackie Shannon will be meeting with the library board in Trenton, so we can share thoughts and concern.
Okay. Anything else? You've been awfully quiet. What, uh...
Well, eventually, I'd like to have a community center option, too, besides a library. People could meet there, have meetings, maybe have little plays, be like a community center. It was a common, multi-use building, not just a library.
Yeah, you better, if, again, if it's going to be on school property, they better know about that going, going into it. Okay. Final comments? Again, the board will, can, we have a little work to do, you have a lot of work to do. But it's, it's, and then you scouts have some work to do. We just dumped this one on you, so let me, let me know your, your collective thoughts on that. We've got you here. You volunteered, you said you wanted to work. We'll put you to work. Ms. Fruci, thank you so much. Now, we'll open it up to public comment. And Mrs. Walker?
Kathy Walker for report. I just wanted to, in the spirit of the holidays, today I had a little issue with our garbage pickup. And Donna was so terrific. She was so efficient, and she called me back, and couldn't have been nicer, and everything was taken care of so easily. And it's nice to see that people follow up. And I think, you know, we should give compliments, because I certainly don't have a problem if it's on the other side. But I, you know, she did a great job, and she, and I wanted you, you know, she's one of the, the quiet people. So, anyways, and happy holidays, and don't forget, kayaking is coming.
The water may come to you, but... Thank you, Mrs. Walker. Other public comment? Mr. Ohio?
I'm Bill Hile. I live on East River. I've got two questions, basically. The first one is, and I'll ask you, what is this new program with the deer, what is this new program with the deer call going to cost us each year?
About $15,000 to $20,000.
About $20,000? Yeah, we hope. Okay, thank you. The other one was, in these revisions or thoughts about the pension, with interest being as low as 2.1%, have you considered buying it out and going to a defined contribution plan? You wouldn't have actuarial costs and worry about the changes in interest rates. Did you...
The rates are there. That's, it's not as easy as that, the rates for selling pensions.
Well, if I understand you, you'd have to pay a higher interest rate for the pensions? No, I was just wondering, if, it is a way to get these costs under control?
I know.
We're, we're talking about reality.
And then, if it's...
An awful lot of other communities have done it long ago, and that was why I asked the question again. The answer's no. Okay, that's all I needed to hear. Trenton, Trenton tried it with their police and fire, and to buy out the existing pensions was so expensive... Yes. That they walked right back to the defined benefit, defined contribution buyout. I understand that. So, I thought I'd ask. Okay. It, it does. Thank you, Mr. Ohio. Other public comment? None, none tonight? Well, in that case, I guess collectively with the board, we can say, wish everybody a merry, a Merry Christmas.
Very Merry Christmas, absolutely.
Everybody be careful, enjoy the time with your friends and families, and we'll see you in January. Thanks for coming tonight. Will the jury, oh, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So, wait, we got, okay. Bundy then Nelson at, at 9:40. Thanks for coming tonight. Everybody be careful. Again, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone.